Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for that, that break, that much-needed break. We're going to get started now with council comments. So if you have something to say, I'm going to run down the roll call and I give you an opportunity to speak, starting with Ernie Davis.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Nicole Ackley.
Yes, I am. I just wanted to thank the woman that was there to represent Children's Mental Health Matters. I've been involved with the program for about five years now, and it's great to see it in the public school system. So I appreciate her, I appreciate her making that happen. And I want to just let everyone know that Wycomico County Youth Advisory Council is also participating, and their videos can be seen on my page and I believe Josh's Facebook page. In reference to the public comments on the Second Amendment, I think that all council members respect, uphold the Constitution and/or want to do what's right for our county. I don't think, I think we're all pretty much on the same page with that. And I would like to, I would like to make a request if we put on the agenda for a work session to discuss it with Sheriff Lewis for the next meeting. And then in regards to Mardella, we, I would like the council to continue to support the renovations at Mardella, and I would strongly encourage the county executive to work with the school board in making that happen. It is unfortunate that when the school board and Dr. Hamlin set their priorities, that Mardella was not top of the list. Hopefully that moving forward, we can, we can make Mardella happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ackley. Mr. Hastings.
Yeah, first of all, I'd say this is a great effort that we had this past weekend with the testing at Purdue Stadium. It was nearly, it was 2,139 people, I think it was, yeah, that was actually tested, of which we've gotten about 15% of the results back regarding the coronavirus COVID-19. As of today, there's 500 cases confirmed in Wycomico County and 11 Wycomico residents are now dead because of the virus. This is obviously a serious situation. I think we need to have, continue to have more testing and more efforts like that as we go forward. Also, I'd like to say the Morris Mill Dam situation, we did get some folks that have reached out about that and wanted to know if the project was still on schedule. We did hear back that the project is indeed still on schedule. They're installing curbing right now inside of the pond side of the dam. The stonework is finished, and then they're working on, next week's the new sidewalk that'll be installed on the same side. So this is a situation that's moving forward. The concrete work should be done pretty soon, and then paving. So this is actually really good news. This has gone on for a very long time, so a lot of folks have reached out about that, and I'm glad to see progress there. And then last thing I'll say, of course, is also, you know, Mardella, I agree, that's also another issue. We may have a really rough budget coming up with a lot of resources not available, but Mardella went through the process, as folks have heard me said many times, to try to move forward with a, you know, keeping their, their project on track. I'd also like to continue to see it on track, but, you know, I understand also that a lot of challenges we're going to have with income not being there in the coming years. That's all I'd say.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hastings. Very good. Mr. Cannon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very quickly, I'd like to thank Health Officer Lori Brewster for the work that she's been doing on this COVID issue that we've been faced with, unprecedented issue. She's been doing great work for the Eastern Shore, and I applaud her for that, as well as emergency services, all our public safety officials and the healthcare providers that have been making life easier for so many people for this difficult time. In reference to the Second Amendment, the only thing I would say is that the one individual that suggested that one particular council member would have a hard time hunting if they only had one shell, we don't really know who they referenced, but Bill McCain would probably be ordering out dinner quite a lot if he only had one shell for hunting.
Thank you for that comment. Ms. Cannon, how about you, Mr. McCain?
Well, I guess I got to respond to Mr. Cannon's comment. I don't miss John, so anyhow, I do got a couple of comments. I do want to note that it's Teacher Appreciation Week, and it's kind of a different climate, given the fact that, you know, the teachers are not in the classroom, but they're still teaching every day. And so if you get that opportunity, please reach out to your teacher and thank your teacher, and we all need to appreciate the profession that makes all other professions possible. And with that said, the, this week, the Teacher of the Year will be announced. That's going to take place on Thursday, and as part of that, yesterday, we announced the Rising Star Award, and that's for a new teacher in our county to recognize one of our most bright shining stars that is part of our Wycomico County Teacher Contingent. And the individual that was awarded the Rising Star Award this year is Heather Smith, who's a special education teacher at Wycomico High School. If you want to see someone that is engaging and forward-thinking, and what I really like, courageous, check Heather out. There's actually a Facebook post of the award presentation, as well as the other finalist. And what I really admire about Heather, she has a phrase that she uses, and it's failing forward. And I think it's just a wonderful phrase. You know, she's, she tries new things, she tries to be innovative, but she's not afraid to fail. And we all fail on occasion, but when you fail, as Heather says, you need to ask the question, well, why did that happen? You know, how could I have done better? And that's a great message, and I just really love her message of failing forward. So congratulations to Heather, and I'll look forward to the announcement of the Teacher of the Year on Thursday. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Mr. Holloway.
Yes. I just want everybody to say, stay safe. We have been through a lot in the past couple of months. A lot of citizens out here are working for good of the people, you know, the first responders, the folks at the hospitals, and don't forget the folks in the nursing homes, especially the folks that are, the patients there, they're not being able to see their families, you know. If you have a time, if you know anybody in there and have time, send them a note, give them a call, and thank you.
Thank you, Bill. President comments. I don't have a whole lot to say, but I do want to expand on people that wrote in their comments tonight. Thank you. It was a lot for our staff to read, but it's what we're here for, and we really appreciate, especially all those people that support the Second Amendment. I didn't realize we had so many people that were vocal about that, and I thank you and I appreciate that. Thank you very much. The Morris Mill Project, hopefully it'll be done by the end of this month. Thank you, Mr. Hastings, for bringing that up. I think I'm going to ride out there tomorrow with my mask on and check on it. It sounds like it's coming along. I know the neighborhood right next to it is really concerned about the way that is moving along, how long it's taken, so they're going to be very excited. And I know the police fire an EMS, they're going to be very excited too, because it's very dangerous trying to get to somebody when you can't because of a roadblock like that, and this has been going on for a long time. So for everybody's been working on that project, thank you, and it's moving right along. Mr. McCain, thank you for bringing up teacher, the teacher appreciation, because it is that, and I was glad to hear that you brought up the Rising Star again. Are you and your wife still sponsors of that award this year?
We certainly are, yep. We presented the recipient with a bat from the shorebirds with their name engraved on it, and also a $1,000 contribution.
That's what you did last year, what you did last year, and I was very impressed. Thank you. I know it meant a lot to the teachers, so thank you for that. This is probably the first year in many years that I'm not going to be able to attend, to attend the Teacher of the Year banquet. Unfortunately, because of the circumstances, we're not going to be able to, but our support is there for the Teacher of the Year, and I, like you, Mr. McCain, I'll be excited to find out who it is, and good luck to all the contenders from every school. So thank you. With that said, it's time to move on. Need to adjourn from legislative session and go into open work sessions, followed by closed work sessions by video conference pursuant to General Provisions, Article Section 3-305 B17 as follows. One, to discuss a personnel matter on the appointment of a proposed candidate over whom this body has jurisdiction to protect the confidentiality of the individual. And two, to consult with legal counsel to protect the attorney-client privilege. I need a motion and a second to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Bill McCain. Do I have a second?
I can.
Got a second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? All right, roll call. Ernie.
Here.
Yay or nay?
We vote no.
I just read about 10 minutes' worth of going into closed work session.
We're, we're voting to adjourn, Ernie, to go into closed, an open work session.
Open and closed work sessions.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Ackley.
Yes.
Mr. Hastings.
Yes.
Mr. Holloway.
Yes.
Mr. Cannon.
Yes.
Mr. McCain.
Yes.
And the chair votes aye, so it's unanimous we'll go into open and then closed work session. All right. Ms. Harley, do you want to go into this? Ms. Harley, I think you're muted.
So I'll announce what's on the agenda. The first open work session is the Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal years 2021 through 2025.
Lev, you should have a summary that you submitted to us. Do you want to discuss that?
I wasn't actually planning to discuss that. That was just the changes overall.
Okay.
I'm here, I can answer any questions if everyone read the memo.
Fine, we asked the executive to be here. So with that said, do we have any council members that have any comments to be made on this capital improvement plan?
Mr. Strausberg here, anybody from the county executive's office?
Mr. Can you answer any questions?
No.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Yes. Where are we? What is our direction as a council with this capital improvement plan, as far as, I guess, evaluating the plan itself and work sessions, but more so having the opportunity to discuss this with department heads or with staff from the administration?
Right. As you know, we've been having difficulty being able to meet with certain members of the executive branch and department heads. We did ask, put in a request for Mr. Culver or someone from the executive branch to discuss it with us. It doesn't sound like they're going to, so we do have deadlines, as you know, but it's going to be difficult to hit these deadlines if we don't have questions answered. And as far as situations like Mardella, we've got a lot of input from the community that can help as well.
I asked that question because, I mean, I don't understand how the council can properly evaluate a capital improvement plan for laying out the next five years in expenses if we don't have the benefit of talking to the executive branch or the benefit of talking to department heads. There's quite a few things in the budget that I have questions on, and I, you know, it's not up to this council to answer my questions.
Right.
And a lot of this budget, I'm sorry, Larry, a lot of this budget, as I understand it, is talking about bonding, but we're not bonding. And I don't think anything's going to be happening anytime soon that's going to allow that to move forward. So I don't know how they can say this is a realistic capital improvement plan when, you know, I think Mr. Taylor pointed out that a lot of the monies that they're saying are being forwarded from last year to this year, and yet we never went to the bond market, so there's no money to transfer into the fiscal year '21. It's not there, but it's in the CIP. So I have a lot of questions.
Right. And as Lev pointed out, there's quite a few changes in the CIP that really need to be discussed, and there are a lot of questions. Yes, Ms. Ackley?
I am. I just had a question for Councilman McCain, and I'm asking because you, I know that you helped write the strategic plan. Is this relatively in line with the strategic plan for the council?
You know, it, I mean, and from a generality sense, that answer is just from a more specific standpoint, when you get to the, you know, the more specific goals, some cases yes, some cases no. I mean, you know, we really should, and your, your capital plan, you know, should be following your strategic plan, and, you know, this should be a product of the strategic plan, you know, that, that's, that should be your roadmap to guide your capital plan. So I guess the best way to answer it is, I mean, the answer is yes, in generality, you know, but from a specific standpoint, you know, we probably, I'm not sure, I'm not sure about all the parallelisms, you know, it'd be nice to see the link of the, you know, the different programs in the CIP and how they link to the goals and objectives of the strategic plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for asking.
Any more questions?
Oh, I'd only make a comment, you know, we heard a lot of discussion during public comments about Mardella, and I would agree. I was, I was also pretty much taken aback by this, and I really think that it needs to, should have stayed on the agenda, it should be on the agenda. It's a disservice to that community. What I don't understand is what is in the CIP, to me, doesn't make any sense. If you look at it in future years out, it's referencing an allocation from state funding that's in place to the total of about $22 million over a four-year period. But all the local funding in this year's CIP has been completely stripped. I think anybody on this council knows as well as I do that how are you going to get the state to commit to $22 million in funding for a badly needed school? How are you going to get that if the local government has completely stripped the funding? So to me, I understand that the CIP is a plan, but you have to have some semblance to reality as to what the circumstances are, and to me, that makes no sense. And again, I just don't understand why there's nobody in this meeting to help us understand that. I think it's a valid question.
It is a valid question. Any more discussion?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, President Dodd. And I apologize if I'm asking basic questions here, my first, my first CIP. So do they usually give us the, the monitoring visit reports from the state? Because there's a lot of state funding here, but the state comes and does those reports. Do we usually get those with the CIP?
It may go to the executive's office.
Okay. Do we get those?
We can put in a request, Mr. Taylor.
Just a couple of thoughts. I did point out that there was about $9 million in this year's CIP that was going to be raised by bonding, and of course, we haven't done that, and in all likelihood, we're not going to. There's only less than two months left, and there's no active effort, as far as I know, to go to the bond market this fiscal year. It's not quite as bad as I thought initially, because $7 million of that $9 million was for Beaver Run, and I see that in this CIP that was issued by the executive in late April, that there's about $5.5 million of old bond money for that, and I think that relates to, if you'll recall, several months ago, it was discussed with council that because of various bonds from the past, there was surplus money that might be able to be swept into Beaver Run, and I'm guessing, it's an educated guess, and I know they can be dangerous, that that's what that 6-point, roughly $5 million is. So at least as far as that money is concerned, that $7 million that was to be bonded, it looks like most of that money is there to be used as appropriate. There was also $2 million of that $9 million that was for the West Side Collector Phase III. That looks like right now it's in the CIP as if, as if it had happened, but it hasn't. So that, I think, reduces the scope of that particular problem. There's another aspect of this, though, that has just come up with the CARES Act, and that is the various grants that the county is entitled to under the CARES Act, and there's two in particular that are significant. The first, and I'll just mention it briefly, is for the airport. That's being administered by the FAA, and that right now is about $18 million. There's another grant, and it would be that essentially the second half, if you will, of the COVID relief fund money, and I've talked with Laura about this this afternoon, this morning, and the state is coming out with further directions on that. But these are all grants, and under the county's code and normal budgeting process, they have to be accepted and put into the budget, both in terms of bringing the money into the budget and then allocating it out as to what it's going to be spent for. So that, that's a unique aspect of this year's budget that just arisen in the past four or five weeks. I don't know whether it would be worth doing a work session on that at the next meeting or not, but these are going to, to some extent, affect the budget. For example, the airport grant, right now in the proposed budget, there's almost, there's a little bit over 3/4 of a million dollars from the general fund to the airport for operating expense. There's also roughly $4 million of bond, new bond money for the airport, bonds to be issued in this coming year. That money, well, that's about $5 million. Most of it, at least certainly some of it, could come out of that $18 million grant, which would in effect preserve money that we already have in the general fund. So there are aspects of this that are going to play out in both this year's budget and next year's budget, and they need to be addressed, as well as accepting the grant money. There's also an issue, I believe, regarding the grant for the airport water main extension. I won't get into that tonight, but I think that needs to be accepted properly. And in any event, there's a lot, I think, that needs to be addressed fairly quickly because it affects both this year's budget and the budget that you've got to adopt fairly soon for next year.
Correct. Any more, Mr. Taylor?
No, that's it.
Okay, any more questions?
Well, heck, I'll, I'll ask a question, and I asked it before, where do we go from here? You know, we've got a budget with the CIP, it's tens of millions of dollars, and...
Hey, Larry.
Yes, sir. John, can you hold on? There's Mr. Strausberg on the phone.
Yeah, yeah, President Dodd.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, President Dodd, my apologies.
You're fine.
Yeah, I'm having, I'm having some, I'm having some technical difficulties on this end, but...
Sounds like you're repeating every word.
But whatever.
You need to cut your TV off.
Yeah, whatever. Yeah, I'm going to turn it off right now. Hold on a second. Okay, so I've finally gotten back in. So dial it back to where you had some questions for me, and I'll try to come forward with you.
Mr. Cannon, can you start with your questions again?
And, Mr. Strausberg, thanks for being here. One of my primary questions was the references to the budget, which seem to be projecting bond sales, and I'm just curious as to how we're going to be able to do that realistically.
What, what, what really is going to need to happen is that because we did not have a bond sale this past fall, and we're contemplating a bond sale this coming fall, we're really going to have to combine those two tranches of money, if you will, and go to the market. Now, you know, I say that, but I would caution the council and the community on the fact that we are, you know, we're in uncharted territory here. We really don't have a clear handle on what the impacts on our economy and our revenues are going to be with regard to COVID-19. But if, if, if things went, if things went well, we would go to the market sometime in the fall, and we would float bonds for both 2020 and 2021.
How much?
John, I, you know, I don't have it in front of me, but I would tell you it's probably on the order of $21 to $22 million.
Okay. I asked that question, Mr. Strausberg.
Oh, I'm sorry, Larry.
You're fine. $21 million? Okay.
That, that's a ballpark, yeah, that's a ballpark, Larry. It depends on, you know, as, as we go into, as we go into the next 12 months, we're going to have to see what the impact is on county general revenue. Property taxes are probably going to be okay for the time being. Local income taxes, I think we're going to see an impact third to fourth quarter of fiscal '21. It remains to be seen what actions, if any, the state is going to take with regard to things like disparity grant and highway user revenue. So it's, it's, it's a very, it's a very fluid situation right now, and we're going to have to, I think, stay in very close communication and revisit this on a very regular basis, at least monthly.
Yeah, I agree. I was going to guess about $10 million a year to be consistent, but we had to factor in this COVID-19, which may end up being even more than $21 million, because we're losing revenue.
It's hard to say. I mean, it's hard to say, Larry. It depends on, A, it depends on how quickly the state can reopen its, its economy, and it also depends on consumer behavior, because even when we reopen, I, I think there's going to be reticence on the part of a lot of the population to, to get back out into close quarters with people who they don't know. So it's, it's just, it's very, very difficult. It's not impossible to really forecast.
Right. Mr. Cannon, I know you had several questions.
Mr. Strausberg, thanks for the clarification. In the, in the budget, there's a lot of references to this old money. There's about $6.4 million referencing old money. Should, I'm not as good with the, you know, with the accounting figures. Should that be restated in this budget, maybe amended, and that be wrapped into the general obligation for new money for bond proceeds?
I think, I think, John, in answer to that question, we, we really need, we really need some guidance from our bond council, who is with Duncan Bolton, Lindsey Rader. We... We, we have verified, most of those funds are with Board of Education projects that have either closed out or have been abandoned. And I, I have not gone through this process before. This is the first time, you know, in my tenure that we have addressed repurposing of idle bond funds. So I'm going to suggest that the council approve our utilization of Lindsey Rader to, to walk us through this process. I, I would point out, and this is very important, that to keep Beaver Run Elementary School on track, the Board of Education is going to need those idle funds by December of 2020. So that, I think, is going to come quickly, and I think we need to get that on the agenda. And we need to move forward with, with this patch.
Okay, that's, that's a six point four million dollar commitment right there, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, sir. And, and, and that's basically repurposing idle bond funds.
Okay, hopefully they're sitting somewhere. I don't know where they might be.
Yeah, I, I will, I, I've got, I've got that on my radar screen, and I'm going to try to provide the details to council. The council needs in order to to take appropriate action to move those funds as necessary.
Thanks. I'll ask one more question, then I'm done. I made comments earlier, Wayne. I was confused in the CIP about the breakdown from Mardella High School. We'd really like to see that in there and continue to be in there. But how it's placed in the CIP this year, the only reference to funding is forward funding in '22, I think. Between '22 and '25, there's about eighteen, there's about twenty-two million dollars of state funding that's listed in this CIP. But as a proper planning guide, I didn't know how you could possibly enter those figures into the Capital Improvement Plan if you don't have some type of local funding established as well in this same CIP. That was all stripped out from, from last year's CIP.
Yeah, John, what has, what has to happen there and the IAC, the Interagency Council, will committee, whatever they call themselves, they'll be making their decisions in mid-May. And certainly, the state's ability to fund these projects is, is questionable at this point in time. So we, we have been in, in discussion with the Board of Education, and we have made it clear to the, to the IAC that we have ongoing discussions with the Board of Education, that we recognize that something has to happen with regard to, to that facility. And we are continuing to have those discussions. At the point in time that, that the state makes a decision as to what their comfort level is with funding that project, then I think we can drill down, if you will, to, okay, what's the county's position? So I think we have a little bit of time on that.
Thank you, Mr. Strasberg. Thank you, Mr. President.
Do we have any more questions for Mr. Strasberg?
Yeah, Wayne, this is Bob Taylor. I don't know if you heard, I mentioned the airport grant through the FAA, the eighteen million dollars.
Yes, sir.
Wouldn't that be available for some or all of next year's funding for the airport, both in terms of the Pago that was going to come out of the general fund, which is about seven hundred and eighty-three, I think, thousand dollars, plus bonding of about another four million? As I look at FAA regs on that, I think that most, if not all of those, those monies, that four million would be, could be covered by that eighteen million dollar grant.
Yes, sir. We, we've had ongoing discussions with the, with the FAA. We've actually, quite frankly, gotten much clearer guidance from the FAA on the care funding than the other tranches of care funding. And what, what the FAA has communicated to us is that the care funding can be utilized by the airport sponsor, which would be Wycomico County, to underwrite operational and maintenance costs for the next four years. And to go back to the discussion that council had earlier, and because of my technical difficulties, I couldn't weigh in, with regard to the, the rental car company agreements and the parking lot agreements, the FAA has opined that we, we can continue to accept whatever level of revenue is available to us from those types of agreements and still underwrite the airport operating and maintenance expenses. We've also gone through a list of capital projects that we felt were COVID-funding eligible. And we've got a pretty good response from the FAA on that. We will continue to have those discussions. I think we'll have more clarity by the next council meeting, and we would be available, I think, to provide you with some pretty clear guidance. So, so you're absolutely right.
Yeah, that's sort of how I read it. And the FAA, it looks like they're taking a much more active position in terms of getting the dollars out the door.
Absolutely. They are. They absolutely are.
All right, any more questions?
So I have a question. Mr. Strasberg, when you, when you had your meeting with the IAC, did they give you any indication on how we could get Mardella back on their CIP?
No, they, they, Councilwoman Ackley, they, at that point in time, they still did not have a clear handle on what the state's financial situation was going to look like. They indicated to us, well, they didn't indicate, they, they clearly stated to us that they would make their decision irrespective of what was or was not in the Wycomico County CIP. So I think, again, I, I believe by the next county council meeting, we'll have some pretty clear direction from the IAC. And that will allow us to make a much better decision with regard to what is and is not feasible with Mardella.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any more questions? Wayne, let me ask you this question. It's a big elephant in the room. You mentioned the bond market. Are we going to be able to go to the bond market with our staffing dilemma?
Well, that's a very good question, Larry. I, I think that, I mean, the reality of it is, is that, is that the credit markets and lenders place a very high premium on certainty and consistency. And I would tell you that that will be, that will be a a question that will have to be addressed on Wall Street. And, and I would encourage, I would encourage some resolution of these issues as, as soon as practicable.
Well, I think you know that's what I'm hoping for. Okay, thank you, Wayne.
Yes, sir.
All right, Ms. Harley, where do we go from here?
As far as the Capital Improvement Plan, I guess the next question would be, I mean, does council want to try to start discussing the individual departmental, departmental request? Or how, I mean, that's really a council decision of how you want to proceed.
Right, I think we need to, but as far as getting them to meet with us, that's another question.
Yeah, we, we do not need to meet with the, certainly all these different departments. I mean, Mr. Strasberg can certainly summarize this, you know, what's in the plan, as he's done before, so.
And I would like for that to happen, because the last time we spoke with Mr. Strasberg on this, he was going to come back to us. How does the council feel about having another work session with Mr. Strasberg?
Yeah, we have substantial questions that still need to be answered, so.
You know, if I could make a suggestion.
Yes.
If, if, for example, we're going to do this at our next meeting, could council members direct their questions to Mr. Strasberg between email them, so, you know, he knows beforehand what those questions are, so he can have, you know, answers prepared and, you know, anticipate the main questions and or concerns, so he can address those efficiently at the meeting.
I think that's a good idea. It's a very good suggestion, Mr. McCain. Does everyone agree?
Yes. Can we just verify that with Mr. Strasberg as well, if he's still on the phone?
Wayne? Wayne, will you be able to meet the next meeting? Was that May night?
I'm here. Yeah, I'm here. I'll have the discussion with the executive.
Okay, it's, Lauren and I'll be meeting Friday, I believe, and hopefully we'll hear from you before then.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any more questions?
Just one other thought, Mr. Dodd, Bob Taylor, again. Do you want to put on the agenda for the next meeting a resolution to extend the date for adoption of the budget? I mean, there, there are a lot of balls in the air, and of course, we typically extend it anyway.
I, I think that might be a good idea. Is, who knows what's going on? Ms. Harley, what do you think?
Yeah, I would recommend extending both the day for the adoption of the budget as well as the adoption of the CIP to the first meeting in June.
To the first meeting in June?
Yes.
We can't get, we can't go any further than that?
Well, not unless you want to have a special legislative session. The first meeting in June is going to be June the second. And per the charter, you have to adopt the budget by June the fifteenth.
So we would have to have a separate legislative meeting. Is everybody okay with the first meeting, extending this till the first meeting in June?
That's, that's only extending it one day, isn't it?
That is correct.
Maybe you would want to think about more than one day.
It is a thought. The deadline's the fifteenth. We'd have to have a special legislative meeting on, on those two topics.
Mrs. Hurley, would it require a resolution to?
It does. It does, yes.
Something we can work on in two weeks and have it before the council and let the council maybe decide, correct?
That is correct.
I'm okay with that. Does the rest of the council agree?
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Okay, well, no opposition. Let's move on to the next topic.
Your next topic is grass clippings on county roads, proposed regulations.
Yeah, so it was something that I, I suggested with seeing a lot of grass growing, because people aren't getting out there. And a lot of times, you'll see these yard companies blowing the grass and the leaves on the street. In some areas, it's illegal. The city has something in their property maintenance code about that, but I, I think that it's forgotten. I know the state has something, but it's all clumped in with debris and other issues. And a lot of enforcement people aren't aware of it. And I, I was asked about this a couple of times. I ride a motorcycle for one, and I hit a patch of grass when I was younger, just going around a U-turn. And I thought I broke my leg because of my bottom kicked out, and I caught my leg on the foot and the foot peg. And so I haven't forgotten that. And then I see articles all the time in biker magazines and in the news where motorcycles are hitting these patches of grass and wiping out, and they're dying. As a matter of fact, I read something that happened this time last year in Virginia, in the county in Virginia. And a lady was killed when she was riding a motorcycle by herself and hit a patch of grass. And then I did a Google search, and there's tons of articles on this. And what I've come up with was a lot of jurisdictions aren't aware of these codes that are mixed in together. And I'll ask Mr. Taylor to expand on the state code, but a lot of states are that way. And there was one county, and the news went to them about that after the person was killed. And the sheriff said they didn't even know there was legislation on the books about grass on, grass clippings on the road. So I, I think I'd like to work on some kind of legislation in the near future before someone gets killed. Mr. Taylor, can you expand on this?
Yeah, first of all, we, we actually do have something in the code. It is kind of arcane. It requires that you look at two different sections. But we do have something under our nuisance law that references to another part of the code that does prohibit putting what they call yard trimmings. And that's kind of a commonly used statutory term that includes grass, leaves, brush, clippings, twigs, et cetera. So we got, we have something. The, the reason that I looked at the state code was I just wanted to see what, if anything, they had. And what I did find is, yes, they do have something that is more or less the same kind of a prohibition. In this case of the state code, there are fairly stiff misdemeanor penalties, including a fine of up to fifteen hundred dollars and I think three months in jail. That is rarely used, I can tell you from, from doing a little research, that's not, not very common. But the other part of it is that, that there are provisions in that state statute that essentially preempt county legislation. It's very unusual, because under, under the preemption part, it confers upon all the municipalities in Maryland the power to enact their own legislation. But for a county, you have to be specially approved by the General Assembly. And there are four, including one that was added this year, Anarundel. So I think that if we're going to do anything further, we probably should get the same kind of authority that Anarundel got this year and three other counties have gotten in the past. But as far as immediate enforcement, I think we've got something on the books. Whether it's preempted or not, gosh only knows. I mean, I can't tell you that right now. But there is something there, and I think if we want to amend that or augment it, that would be wise to get state authority before we do that.
Right, I, I agree with you. And I, I tell you, another issue with the grass clippings is environmental issues. There are environmental laws out there with this. And I, I know, I always look to Mr. Hastings as being my environmental expert. So he may be able to elaborate on the environmental issues with grass clippings hitting the rivers and creeks in the bay. Mr. Hastings, can you comment on that?
Oh, yeah. Well, a lot of things to say there as far as, depends what, if it's a farm or any, you know, smaller operation. I think the bigger issue seems to be with, you know, with, in the city or other kind of, you know. I don't know if there's any specific legislation that I know of that prevents. That's an issue with, I guess, with getting nitrogen phosphorus or anything like that into the bay through this. But grass clippings in general, you want to, and pet waste and all that, you, you definitely want to keep that out of the, out of the water and out of the waterways or ditches or anything like that.
Right. I, I would like to move forward on this, and we don't have to do it right away. I would like to look into the state more. I know Carroll County has this on the books. books, but Ms. Harley and I had a discussion, and I did find one county that has the law in another state, but they also have a web, webpage that's set up for education, and maybe we could start off with our county webpage and try to educate some of the people cutting grass and some of these yard companies about the right way to do it.
Yeah, you know, in fact, Mr. Dodd, I was just going to comment on that, I'm not, I'm not so sure if, if it's like something legislatively we need to be moving forward with as more of a public service educational campaign to, you know, educate our residents, I mean, we do have, you know, essentially laws on the books, and the state has laws on the books saying that you should not be, you know, have, have your grass clippings going on to the county roads and streets, so, but, you know, maybe our focus just needs to be more on a educational campaign to make people aware of this.
And we can do that, go ahead, Mr. Hastings.
Well, I would say I'd definitely add on to that, certainly around, I see in the city of Salisbury, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of the grass clippings and other kind of, you know, there are pinechats or other kind of sticks and things like that, clog up the drains and cause a little bit of, it's a flooding issue there, there are, and, and like Councilman McCain said, that might be a issue of a public education, too, you know, there's only so much you can do legislatively, but at the same time, this is a, you obviously don't want to have a continued flooding or other kind of issues there, and certainly, I see that on my street and others.
Right, and anytime it rains, you can ride down any street that has gutters, and you can see where the drains are clogged with grass and leaves and sticks and even trash, I'm willing to start with on the educational process.
Yeah, a couple other comments. So, Mr. Dodd, obviously for grass clipping, cutting companies that are doing this on a regular basis, if for maybe a warning, there is that state code provision, which is pretty, pretty stiff, so, I mean, there is some way, if, if somebody's flagrantly doing that, to address that right now, and just another comment on the proposed state legislation, the thing for Anarundel County went through with no amendments and an entirely unanimous vote in both houses, so I think all we would have to do is ask our local delegation to take that law and just change Anarundel County to Wycomico County and put it in the hopper.
Okay, Mr. Cannon?
Yeah, I mean, we could do that, we could, you know, we could go to that, that trouble to appeal to the state, we could have the additional regulations, the only thing is, we're going to still be in the same position, just because you make a law, I mean, just because we create a new law, which is sort of repeating the existing law, it doesn't mean that the public is going to be any more cooperative, that half of them aren't even going to know that we probably passed this legislation, so I, I think it comes back to the educational process, we only have one, one sheriff's department, so it's very easy, I think, to educate, you know, the law enforcement, it's not as if there are five or six we have to talk to, there's only one, and the other side of that is to educate the public, and whether we go to the state of Maryland, try to get through the, all, all the routines of getting legislation passed, and we already have it on the books, I don't think that's going to, it's not going to add to the enforceability of it.
My thought on that, and you brought up a good point, is you pretty much explained that it is vague, and a lot of people don't know it's there, and my thought was to make it separate, because I've done a lot of research on this in the last two years, and the last week or so, I've done a lot of research more, and, I mean, you can Google and put grass clippings in there in legislation, and you'll come up many, with many articles, and it's all across the nation, that a lot of people don't even know it's on their books, and if I was an enforcement officer, it's, it's really hard to pick out legislation, so, I'd like to keep that on our radar screen, but start with, with some education, if that's okay.
I guess the question is, and you probably have to go through the executive's office on this, Larry, who does, where, where does this come through, what, you know, what does this come through, does it come, come through emergency services, I mean, who's going to, who's going to do the process?
Unfortunately, I found there's not, there's not one department that really does community outreach, and that's something we're definitely missing in the county.
Maybe it could be a part of an educational process with public works, the, on similar things such as, you know, ditches and things like that.
Yeah.
You're muted.
Yeah, President Dodd, this is Wayne again.
I think we all can hear you, Wayne, I think President Dodd is muted.
Okay, am I, am I back on board?
Yep.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I think, I think that this really is an issue for our roads department, our public works department, this is, this is definitely an MS4 issue, and I think we could start with a public education campaign, and then that could evolve into a, if you continue to put your grass clippings, your leaves, et cetera, into county roads and pan gutters, we're going to have the ability to find you, so. It, it is, it is clearly, clearly an issue, and I think it's an MS4 issue, and I think it need, I think it needs, I think it needs to be addressed.
Yeah, it, it's all over the county, and we've got a sheriff's department with, with quite a few motorcycle riders and their motor unit, and I'd hate to lose one of them because they come around a corner and hit a patch of that grass, we've got Delmarva Bike Week here with over 100,000 bikers that come through here, so it's really difficult to think about somebody getting injured or killed on a motorcycle, and this past Friday...
I saw one of the local schools where they cut their grass and all out front, it was right on the street, and I took a picture of it and showed it to Ms. Harley, so, it's an education process with many departments, and... Are you there, Wayne?
Uh, yes, I am, you're breaking up, Larry, for whatever reason, I guess the internet's overloaded right now, but yeah, I hear you loud and clear, and I think we need to address this.
Yeah, okay, I'm willing to work with you, and I'm sure the sheriff would, too, because he's got people out there that can't afford to lose, so that's all I have, if anybody else has any more questions. All right, moving on.
Your next work session item is the solar energy systems, and these are also proposed regulations, and I believe Councilman Bill McCain would like to speak on this topic.
Mr. McCain?
Um, the last two Mako sessions, the summer and the winter Mako, when they stated their top three priorities, one of those top three priorities have been solar parameters for local jurisdictions to have in their zoning codes, particularly our rural counties, in fact, our Rural Coalition had a meeting on this at the last Mako session, and you have a copy of the presentation that was given by Sandra McLamore and Les Knapp from Mako, and Ryan Showwater, who's an attorney that handles a lot of these solar projects, you know, I'm not going to go through that presentation, but, you know, I definitely encourage everyone to read that presentation, I mean, that presentation is a fabulous document, it kind of walks through the, all the issues around solar and the importance of having regulations in your local zoning codes to be prepared when, you know, the, the next industrial scale solar plant, you know, or project comes to your, your county, and we did put an example in there of, of some other counties, you know, a lot of this is focused on particularly industrial scale, because, because they can be extremely controversial, I'll just say this, from a professional standpoint, there are several steps they have to take when they do a solar project, and one of those is, a real estate valuation expert has to be retained to address the issue, does it affect surrounding property values or not, but that's one of the things they have to do, but professionally, I've had to be involved in numerous of these, in fact, they list several projects in that presentation that they gave, you'll see numerous projects listed here on Delmarva, in fact, those first few, like Richfield, old in Cherrywood and Bluegrass, I had to testify, actually, in all of those, and these are big projects, like Cherrywood in Caroline County, I mean, that's a 202 megawatt project, just put that in perspective, that's about 1,000 acres of land, and that's, I mean, you're, you're starting to talk around 500,000 pounds, so, you know, we're not talking about, you know, what we're addressing here largely, you know, we're not, we're not just talking about what you might see, you know, riding by down Route 50, or, you know, we have one here in Hedren, but they're pretty small scale, you know, we're talking about things that are 50 watts, make 80 megawatts, if anything over 2 megawatts, the Public Service Commission has to authorize these, so, and these, and these could be quite controversial, I'll, I'll just mention the Richfield Solar Project, it's in Dorchester County in Hurlock, I mean, I think we attended, it was three Board of Appeals hearings with standing room only, this went on for literally several months, they, I mean, there were so many people in attendance, and after three hours or so, they weren't even scratching the surface of people testifying and had to keep rescheduling public hearings, so they could be quite controversial, and, you know, any county will tell you, in most of these counties, they did not have these regulations when the firm came to their county, and let me tell you, quickly after they had their first project, they introduced regulations into their zoning code to be better prepared for the next time, and most of these regulations, you'll see that they reference in the examples of some of the ones that have been included here, I mean, it's pretty basic stuff, I mean, well, you know, we're not talking about real major things, I mean, mostly, you know, they're just talking about landscaping buffers and fencing requirements, setbacks, but some big things you need to address with solar are things like decommissioning, you know, these projects don't last forever, so what's going to happen at the end of the, because a lot of times they lease the land, might be a 30-year lease or 40-year lease, you know, what happens at the end of that, so you need some kind of decommissioning language, some of the counties on the shore and across Maryland, they've also addressed things like how much acreage to allow in solar farms, you know, because one of the things from the farming community standpoint, you know, you don't want to use up all your prime farmland for solar projects, so, but, you know, some of them do put limits on acreage, some of them also designate corridors, they actually designate, Queen Anne's does that, they have a solar corridor, and it kind of follows one of the Delmarva power, power grids, and right of ways, and they have to be within a certain distance of that right of way, so we included in there, and Mr. Taylor, I know he's included some information in here, he's been involved with this as well, locally, we put Talbot Counties in there, just to give you an idea of what these requirements in the zoning code may look like, and something you'll see in Talbot Counties, but you'll see in a lot of counties of zoning regulations, they sort of have a small, a medium or slash intermediate, and a large scale, because obviously it's very different, you know, there's a big difference of people putting solar panels on their rooftops and versus an industrial scale, essentially power plant, you know, someone doing 100 megawatts and, you know, using up 6, 800 or 1,000 acres of land, so, Mr. Taylor's also included in there, some codes from counties not in Maryland as well, well, you know, I think there's one from North Carolina, one from Virginia, I think it was, Mr. Taylor helped me, was it Georgia Tech?
Yeah.
It did the study, it has, you know, we have the information there as well, so, anyhow, just going to sum up, you know, at the end of the day, you know, we, we're a little bit late to the game here, but, you know, make so has made this, you know, it's emphasized to our rural counties, you know, to make this a priority, and, you know, and by no means do we have to reinvent the wheel, you know, there's plenty of models of legislation out here and zoning parameters that we can, we can, we can follow, and I, and I did want to mention, too, that, like, the public, some people say, well, you know, the Public Service Commission kind of dictates these projects, that once they can get a approval to introduce one into a county, once they can get a certificate of need, if it's over 2 megawatts, but the Public Service Commission makes it very clear that consideration should be given, and they recommend that consideration be given to local zoning regulations, in fact, their quote is, you know, due consideration has to be given, so, you know, they do look at and, and want to abide by your local regulations, so.
But, Councilman McCain, I just have a question for you.
Sure.
What is, I guess, I just don't have that much knowledge on solar energy, what, what's the opposition when you were going to these public hearings?
Yeah.
What was the opposition?
Yeah, and a good example of that would be the Richfield Solar Project in Dorchester County, in the Hurlock area, I mean, it was a very large project, and give or take, it was like, it was like 600 or so acres of land, so you're talking, you know, several hundred thousand solar panels, it's a very rural part of the county, you know, you know, very, you know, it's all agriculture, the agricultural community was very split on it, because a lot of the folks just felt like, you know, it's, what you see a lot of times in situations like this, they didn't want to see that the farm field turn into a solar power plant, you know, that, that was probably the biggest opposition, you know, they want it to remain as agriculture, and, and people, and one of the reasons, for example, I'm involved in these a lot of times, people would make arguments that it's going to take away their property values, you know, it's going to take away their, their view shed, because they're going to have to look at the solar panels as opposed to agriculture, so that, that's your, that's probably your most typical opposition in these, in these type of projects.
Yeah, I can add on to that, I, I, about five years ago, Les Knapp with Mako, who, by the way, just left this weekend, I was kind of sad to see that, but, you know, I put together a group with, a working group, that basically looked at a lot of these issues, and, and we tried to find common ground, literally, on a lot of this, but, you know, it takes 400 years to make one inch of good topsoil, and, you know, a county like Kent County went out of their way to try to find, to, to, to put in good regulations in place, only to feel like they were being superseded by the Public Service Commission on their wind project, which eventually became Massey Solar, but these are, they're gobbling up some of the bigger issues, they're kind of gobbling up agricultural land pretty quickly, Caroline County's went through the process to, and, and then set a limit of 2,000 acres, and with that cherry project, and with the, the other larger one that they had together, that was immediately 1,800 acres of 2,000 total acres, 1,800 acres were automatically gobbled up with those two projects, and what that means, and I think what a lot of farmers fear is that when you lose that amount of acreage... Uh, and what that means, and I think what a lot of farmers uh, fear is that when you lose that amount of acreage in farming, suddenly the, you can't go to the any of your suppliers. Uh, it might be, not your credit and fragmentation, which is one issue, but then you're also, uh, you know, the people who used to be uh, your neighbors who are, you know, buying farm equipment, keeping the price down low because everyone was serving, uh, was going to one store for one or one uh, source uh, for products. Suddenly that's fewer people doing that and the cost goes up for neighboring farmers. So we heard a lot of that back and forth. Um, but it is, certainly this became a bigger issue to try to find common ground on these utility scale projects versus smaller um, community.
And are these happening mainly in areas that are zoned agricultural?
Yes. Yes, they're, they're almost entirely, uh, they're, they're, for the most part, they're almost entirely in this kind of scale. They're in uh, areas that are zoned agricultural because they're the only uh, you know, it's, it's pretty rural areas because, because of the amount of acreage is, that's required.
And originally we, we started calling it solar sprawl because you had companies from, I mean, the big companies were coming out of Seattle and San Francisco. Who were then gobbling up, they, they specifically targeted eastern shore land that was wide open and next to a transmission line. So they could come in and, and run those issues for a while. They're on taxing, how much are they getting taxed at a agricultural rate or a at a commercial rate, which is, this is more of a commercial activity. So it's.
Yeah, Del, Del Marva is very much targeted for this because of our location. You know, we're, we're in the mid Atlantic. Uh, you know, we're close to a lot of metropolitan areas. And, and another thing about these type of projects, this doesn't provide power to your, to your town, for example, you know, the project like this is, is, or to your county. Uh, the power is sold to the grid. Uh, I mean, Delmarva Power isn't, isn't a producer. They're a transmitter of energy. So these projects are designed to feed into the grids and they sell this. I mean, the purchasers of this could be, I mean, they could be New York. I mean, it could be somewhere in New Jersey. Uh, you know, it's not your neighboring town in most cases.
Hey, Bill.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I guess I'm not breaking up anymore. Tagging on to what Ms. Ackley and Mr. Hastings said, and along with uh, your comments too, about these farmers. Are we seeing mostly commercial investors or are they farmers that can't grow a crop and they need to subsidize their farming?
It's actually both of the above. Typically what happens is you have a solar company. They do the project and they will either purchase or lease the land from the the land, the land owner makes their money from the land lease or the land purchased. Uh, the actual development of these projects are almost always a, a, a solar company. And, and typically that solar company, as Mr. Hastings referenced, yeah, they're not, it's, it's not typically anyone local. They're usually companies from, um, I mean, these companies we report with have been, you know, from Chicago, uh, you know, Seattle, uh, Virginia, but definitely usually they're out of the area. And there's usually, a lot of times there's three uh, uh, stages of this. I mean, there's the landowners whose land is being leased or purchased. Then you have a solar company that develops it. And in most of these cases, they didn't sell that to a power company.
Right.
Who they did run it long-term. Uh, so.
Okay.
So it, with this, this place is zoned agricultural that it's like there's no, there's no regulation on these, on this.
Well, no, they're actually heavily regulated. The Public Service Commission, uh, there's a lot of hurdles any solar company has to go through to get a, they have to get a certificate of need from the Public Service Commission. And that's a very onerous, very onerous and very expensive project endeavor to do that. And, but once they are able to obtain that certificate of need, uh, that's sort of a golden ticket then for the company to move forward uh, with their, with their project. But that could, that may could take them a, a year and a half, for, for example, uh, in a, in a very uh, expensive investment that to obtain a certificate of need from the Public Service Commission.
I will, go ahead, John.
Thank you. I would guess, I'm not sure, Ms. Ackley, uh, but I would think that you were probably, when you mentioned regulations, I think you may have been thinking local regulations.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. Uh, yeah, yeah, locally, uh, most of these end up usually in front of the, uh, your, your board zoning appeals, uh, because typically, you know, it's not addressed directly in our zoning code. So uh, so kind of what happens is they're sort of dealt with on a case by case basis. Which, and the danger there is you'll lack consistency.
Yeah.
And also makes it, it can be like, say, it can be very controversial sometimes because you don't have a, it's, it's much simpler when you have your local code that you can reference and say, okay, well, you gotta do these things. Here's what you gotta do. And that's why Mako encourages that so much, these rural counties, because there's been some of, it's, it's in our, it's in our brief book here, but they give the example in Washington County in Western Maryland, you know, that, you know, that very, you know, that was a big controversial one. And it really wasn't that big of a project, but it was the, uh, you know, they did, it was, it was tried to be denied and so forth and just the challenges that go with that.
To me, this sounds very reminiscent, Bill, of what we lived through. Um, when and there was the huge discussions and debates about downzoning the agricultural district. And that was when there was huge growth in Mycomico County, 2006, 2008. And that was a huge firestorm. You know, it was all about, as you mentioned earlier, property rights versus farm fragmentation. Where are we going to come out with this? How are we going to keep that balance? I know that the, uh, some local farmers have weighed in on this. Bill, what's your take? And first of all, thanks for putting it together. It's a lot of hard work there, a lot, a lot of great work. But what is your local take on how the farmers are going to, um, uh, you know, feel about this and the Farm Bureau?
Yeah, yeah, actually you, you got a few questions there. Let me back up a little bit. The, yeah, I mean, it, I, I certainly remember that very well when when we were on the council, uh, and I guess it was around oh six, oh seven, we were dealing with that. And, but no, this is much different though. I mean, this is, um, you know, I mean, this is not, this isn't a property rights issue. I mean, this is a zoning issue. You know, I mean, all our properties have, are zoned something, you know, in our agricultural community, community. You know, we have, if they're zoned ag, there's a, who, we have that in our code. And in our code, you know, there are certain things you can do and can't do and uh, et cetera. And you know, so solar is just something that this wasn't, especially large scale industrial solar wasn't on the radar when our code was written, you know, a number of years ago. So, uh, in, in regards to the ag community, we try to involve them as much as we can. In fact, uh, uh, Ms. Hurley, uh, we, we had reached out to the Farm Bureau and some of the farmers. Uh, we had a meeting with them. Laura helped me, I think it was back in, uh, was it January maybe or so? Um, we met, uh, Ms. Hurley did take minutes of that.
Hey, I took minutes of all my meetings.
Uh, you know, get some feedback from the, you know, folks from the ag, the, the Farm Bureau, they, they've had discussions about this. You know, and I, I guess, you know, they're just responding to that. And we, we've had several farmers weigh in since we've had those meetings as well. And I mean, they got some good suggestions. They've made, they've made some suggestions, you know, things we need to consider. Um, you know, I, I'd say the reaction is, I guess, is a little mixed, I guess, is the best way to describe it. I mean, you know, I mean, farmers want to protect their farmlands, you know, they also want to be able to have as many options as they can with their land. Uh, so, you know, it kind of gets to your point, John. Yeah, it's like any, it's like anything or, or anything or zoning codes. It's always a balancing act of trying to, uh, uh, I will say this, the good thing with this, as I mentioned earlier, we're, we're not inventing the wheel here at all. You know, most counties already have, you know, they've put this in their code and, and it's been, they've addressed this very recent, so you know, it's very contemporary. So we, we have a lot of, uh, we can model something in Mycomico after the other counties in terms of what's been best for them. And kind of uh, getting to our Rising Star Award winner, you know, what failures they've had too, so we can, we can fail forward.
Well, I would hope so. It just, you know, when you start talking about imposing restrictions, Bill, and, and it's interpreted, it's limiting uh, landowners' revenue sources, revenue streams. And it's going to be, it could be, I hope it's a, I, 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 I recognize the, the importance of this.
Yeah, but once again, you're going down the wrong rabbit hole there. We're not, we're not talking about creating anything to limit anybody's revenue streams. You know, that's not what this is about. I mean, this is just, you know, and if you build a house, you've got setback requirements. You know, I mean, you're not taking anything away from people. You're trying to be, uh, you know, you're trying to have the system. Wayne, you're live.
Hey, uh, Bill.
Yes.
It, it, you're doing a fantastic job. And it deserves another work session. Um, and it's getting late. We've got a, um, a guest that's been hanging on a while. Uh, I do have one question that I wanted to ask you right around the time, uh, Ms. Ackley asked the question about regulation. And, and I think it uh, should be discussed, um, at the next meeting. And I hope you can remember, I don't forget. But I wanted to know the difference in the, the Public Service Commission regulations versus the county regulations that we may look into or adopt. So if you could keep that in mind for your next presentation.
Uh, Bill?
Yes.
Um, Phil Holloway. You know, you said it's not a property rights issue. It's a zoning issue, but when you rezone any kind of property, you know, it's, you're either, um, you're affecting property rights one way or the other, even giving them, giving them more rights or less rights. Now, I just looked on the internet, corn is $3.15 today. Farmers can't grow corn for $15 or $3.15. Now, John brought up, John brought up what was going on in oh six and oh eight, oh seven. Um, farmers like the options. There's, um, no farmer wants to give up their land. Farmers want to farm. Sometimes they have to make choices. They end the farming business by either selling off a building lot, and we heard all that back then, or in some cases, in some cases um, going to a certain amount of solar panels. That's not hit this area too much for that yet. And um, some of this, I agree with, you know, you've got, you've got things in here about dismantling and running that, but we really, we're, we really need to be careful here on how we go about changing the zoning for what farmers can do with their land.
Right. Well, Joe, I'm not, no, I agree.
I'm, I'm very sensitive.
You were done.
We heard, we heard what we heard, you know, we had tractors circling the government office building back then. We don't want to go through that again. And I, uh, I guess you've been meeting with the Farm Bureau. I've not heard too much out of them about this yet, um, and other farmers. But when you go changing zoning on farmers' land, so, and as it says now, you say it doesn't affect it, but right now they can do this. So if you, you do zoning regulations, you're changing it. So I think, I appreciate your work you've done. Don't, I'm not criticizing you here. I'm just saying, we need to watch this very carefully about what we do to affect the value of farmland in Mycomico County.
Yes, and whenever, yes, I agree a hundred percent. But number one, is that this is an evaluation issue. We're talking about, you know, when someone does one of these, what's it going to look like and what parameters you put around it? So, but I, we do need to be sensitive to it. And, you know, you know, tonight's just really to kind of put this out there. I mean, it's coming and we don't have anything or go to address it. So, you know, what we're trying to do here is you don't want the death issue that we already have to deal with. You know, this is heading in that same direction. So let's be proactive, not reactive.
I agree. Okay. Um, can we move on since we've got, um, a guest waiting?
Please.
Is that okay?
Please, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Bill.
Ms. Hurley, do you need to explain what to do next about, uh, logging out?
Mr. Dodd, before she answers that.
Yeah.
On your next session, your personnel session.
Yeah.
I was going to log out on that. I don't think there's any need for me to be there. Um, and then, then I can log back in for the next session.
Okay.
If Laura will beat me or something when that begins.
Sure.
Now, I do notice that it's now nine 30. And if you wanted to postpone that second session till the next meeting, uh, it, it wouldn't be any skin off my nose. I'll think.
What do the council members think on that request? John, what do you think?
It's done.
Do I?
Just get it done.
Get it done, right?
Just get it done.
Okay. All right. Um, we're going to log out. I do want to let, uh, for the record, I do want to let people know that we as council members not, may not agree on every issue, but when we walk out that door, we are friends. And I appreciate that with everybody. So thank you and I'll see you in the next session.